Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Pirskey.
Here.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Bertrand.
Here.
Okay, next we'll do the moment of silence and the flag and pledge allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of the Republic of America, which is our Constitution, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. First item is to approve the agenda. We get a motion to approve the agenda.
If there are no additions, corrections, Mike?
Not from staff, no.
Okay, I'll move the agenda.
Commissioner Pirskey moves the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Agenda's passed. First item today we have is we begin our meeting today by recognizing our employees who are celebrating their work anniversaries with the county. We are recognizing 55 employees with anniversaries from July to December 24th. Combined, these employees have 970 years. Just think of that, 970 years of dedicated county service. I'm pleased to give the floor to Mike Williams, who will begin the video presentation and to recognize these employees. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. We all know that we here in Stearns County were full of dedicated and hardworking employees who every day live out our values of professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable as they go about the day in providing vital services to the people of the county. And today, we're going to take a few minutes to honor and recognize those who have hit a milestone in their careers at Stearns County. So we'll take a few minutes and watch the PowerPoint that celebrates the milestones of these employees. Fantastic people in those 55 employees and all our employees who exemplify our mission to provide exceptional public services for a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. Your dedication to our important work makes life better for the people of the county, and that's what we are here for, to make people's lives better. And interestingly, the county has been making people's lives better for 170 years. The county officially became a county in February of 1855, so a little bit of history honoring our employees today. So on behalf of myself and the county board, we appreciate all of you and the work you do in serving residents of Stearns County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to those employees. I happen to know the 40 years is a long time, and of course, 10 years is a long time, but a lot of people don't know we have 1,000 employees. And again, we're completing the mission of federal, state, and states, local initiatives, and certainly we do good work or try to do good work every day, and without the staff, we couldn't do that. So yes, thank you very much for that. First order of business then, after that recognition, would be the consent agenda. There's 12 items on the consent agenda, including the minutes. Anybody want to pull something or?
I'll move to consent.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull F1, the meeting minutes.
Okay. Commissioner Pirskey pulls the minutes. With that, Commissioner Knott.
I'll move the rest of the consent.
Okay, Commissioner Knott moves the rest of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pirskey seconds it. Any discussion on approving the consent agenda minus the minutes? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The approval of consent agenda passes. Why don't we deal with the minutes right away?
Okay. Mr. Chair, you know, viewing the concerns that we have here by the public and the issues that transpired at the last meeting, I want to make sure that the minutes do reflect what actually took place and have reference to the activities that took place last meeting. So I'm going to ask this to be an addition to the minutes. It will say Commissioner Pirskey requested that the CUP from his district receive a separate public hearing based on numerous phone calls and emails commissioners received, the request from the township, and a petition from 20 of the neighbors. Likewise, I'd like to have this added to the minutes. Commissioner Pirskey stated that the CUP request at the public hearing by the owner did not include a request for any music on the property. Discussion of the music did not take place until after the public hearing was closed.
Okay. So noted, I assume? Then we'll need a motion to approve the minutes.
Doesn't there have to be a motion and a second and amending the minutes first, Mr. Chair?
Mike?
That would be the typical process if it's something substantive.
So make the motion to approve the addendum to the minutes.
Yeah, approve the amendment to the minutes and then approve the minutes. The procedure.
Sure.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended minutes. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay. Motion passes. Now there's a motion for the approval of the minutes as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Pirskey moves to approve the minutes as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Knott seconds that. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Minutes are approved. First item of business would be the auditor treasurer, Randy, on the G1 transfer of excess funds.
So there's some information in your packet. We'll be referring to that occasionally here, but a few of the funds that we have have over the 50% of fund balance, and our policy is to stay within the 35% to 50% of expenditures. That's the same as the state auditor recommendation. So we have some accumulation of this additional fund balance over many years. So we're looking to move those into a capital fund and some into a law enforcement account for the Justice Center. By moving those funds into these other accounts, that allows us to pay for capital or larger one-time expenditures such as IT, and then those items, we can keep off the levy, so it's a way of also budgeting to help keep the levy smaller. With the capital items, we're not planning in the near future to do any bonding besides, of course, the Law Enforcement Center, but using this capital dollars to pay for any building and other renovations that we need. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah in a little bit to talk about some of the immediate uses, but the Justice Center, we do need some cash flow on that before we go to bond. So you know, architect costs, some of the subfund costs, and then once we do bond, then we will reimburse ourselves. And the other potential use in the future is a debt service. You know, as we projected, that the debt service may go negative for a bit, so we may have to transfer some fund into the debt service fund to keep that above water temporarily, but as we get further along in the project, we'll be able to determine that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah with some of the details.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner. Sarah Uch, Finance Director in the Auditor Treasurer's Office. So on your packet, page 117 of 119, the board was provided and in the public document, it talked a little bit about the fund balance estimates at year end, and then tried to break down our board action requests, because there's really kind of three requests that we have before the board this morning. And so as Randy mentioned, we're looking at our three operating funds and looking to move a combined amount of over $25 million from those operating areas to future spend or capital areas. So Randy talked about the Justice Center. He talked also about some funds into the project fund for just future to avoid future debt. Another one we have in there is transfer to the Highway Construction Fund. So the Highway Department, if you will, has two funds that they monitor. One is their operating fund, and the other one is construction fund. And we separated out the construction fund about the same time we started receiving local option transit sales tax, so that we had a way to track that and accumulate balances as things carry over and projects fluctuate. And then we've been levying for that, but what we're finding is we had an accumulation of fund balance in the operating fund where we do the maintenance and the rest of road and bridge. And some of that was likely because of when we started the new fund. We didn't probably seed that fund with excess, you know, levy dollars from years past. So in discussion with the engineer and the budget committee, we talked about taking the funds out of the road and bridge operating fund to have it compliant with our own policy of the 50% and put it into the Highway Construction Fund, so that that funds is there for construction projects for highway. The funds that are coming from the general fund and the Human Services Fund, those are what we're talking about putting into these project fund and these capital funds. And a couple IT initiatives that I'll just walk through, and they're spelled out in the memo to the board, but the first one is a future ERP. So ERP is kind of the main accounting and finance system that the county has. We're looking to put some seed money aside for future spend, because we know these projects are a substantial cost to implement, and so we're looking to put a million dollars, you know, for future spend in that. We know the system's 20 years old. We know that the company is phasing it out, and we want to have that seed money put aside for future. The other one I have highlighted is artificial intelligence initiative. This is something where the IT team is looking to do a couple pilot projects, maybe partner with a consultant, but they're starting with Microsoft Copilot, and that's an AI initiative that was recently rolled out in the government platform of Microsoft. And so they don't plan to spend all $200,000 at one time in one area, but this is meant more of an initiative for them to be able to navigate and try out different things and come to the board with future projects that would need to be approved by the board. Third is the Workday contract changes for configuration and post-go-live. Workday, as you know, is a system that we're working on implementing right now. It's a big substantial undertaking, replacing seven HR and payroll current systems, and we've had some configuration changes. The time that we're doing this implementation happened to coincide with the time of bargaining agreements, and of course, we made some substantial changes, as you're aware of, in health insurance plans and other things that we negotiated, and now we need to configure that new system to help, you know, catch up to that. And then we also know we're going to need some post-go-live support for the amount of training it's going to take. Lastly, we have some in there for employee recognition and wellness programs. This is something that came to light a little bit from recommendations or things we're hearing from employees and department directors, and so we're looking to have some one-time funding put aside for HR and administration to work on employee recognition and wellness items to be able to do something with that. That's my summary, and I think all three of us are here if there's any questions or concerns the board may have.
Thank you. I think there continues to be some confusion from the public on fronting this money and why we're spending money, our own money, when we've got the sales tax. And I think, again, as Randy explained it and you touched on it, it's we're fronting the money. It's like we're borrowing it to ourselves to do the cash flow, and then we'll pay ourselves back as part of that, so.
Mr. Chair, the sales tax won't be start to be collected until the second quarter.
Yeah.
So we don't have any of that income yet. Once that income starts coming in, then we'll be able to fill that gap. So it truly is a move for cash flow, just as you said.
And again, I was shocked when I found this out a year ago, that we have no bonded indebtedness, and for an organization as big as ours, I was pleasantly surprised by that, because there's a lot of cities and small cities that have huge bonded indebtedness, and for us not to have bonded indebtedness is definitely a plus, and, you know, again, to the work of the finance that you've done that, so continue to do that. And then the anticipated investment earnings that were higher than expected, you know, that's obviously a positive. In the consent agenda, we approved the transfer of excess funds, which Randy and I talked about. Obviously, a good budget is to follow the budget. You know, that's always the best, and now this is my, beginning of my third year, so I know we have to do those transfers, but trying to stay as tight to the budget as we can, I think, is obviously always the goal. But anyway, good report. Any questions on the report? Commissioner Clark?
Actually, just want to reinforce the great work in trying to work this out. I certainly agree that it can be confusing to the public about when the transfers happen, but we can't really know the end of what money is available until after the fiscal year has ended, from my understanding from both of you. And then also, yeah, it was, it took some real work to get to zero bond debt, and I think the work that we all did together is helping us as we move forward now, because we want to keep these costs down as much as possible.
Certainly, you know, the budget committee, including administration, that's all part of that, and the board approving those budgets and all of these, so yes.
Mike?
Yeah, really, thank you, Mr. Chair. The bottom line is, this is good news. This is money that we can set aside to offset future costs, because we've either had more revenues or less expenditures in some past budgets. So while it's some, you know, accounting that we need to do and should do, it's good news for the future, anyway. It's some set aside money.
It's better than you coming to us saying we're $50 million in the hole, and we need to come up with something, so thank you for that. And again, people are surprised when they find out, one, that we have 1,000 employees, and two, that we have a $210 million budget. And again, that's a reality that makes Stearns County operate the way they do. Any other questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve the transfer of excess funds would be in order. Commissioner Clark moves that.
Second.
Commissioner Pirskey seconds it. Commissioner Persky seconds it. See no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion passes. Mike and Kevin, I assume?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Kevin, Kevin is here.
Update on the Justice Center? And then what do you want to do first? The update on the Justice Center or the public engagement? What do we do? Kevin first?
Yeah, I think Kevin can be first.
I'll give you an update and then we'll talk. Public engagement?
Yeah, we, this conversation started a couple of meetings, actually. It was brought up about holding some engagement activities sometime in the future. And at the last time we talked about it, I suggested and you all agreed, or someone suggested anyway, that we get the milestones of decisions in front of you and a current, a current look, a look at where we are with the design. And that should help us decide when we want to hold any engagement sessions and, you know, what the topic might be in those. So Kevin's here to give us an update.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Kevin Kornick, Head of Facilities here at Stearns County, bringing you a little, an update on where the project sits today. And then we hand it out in front of you, some working drawings that we received from our architects on some exterior ideas they had. And I'll, I'll take any feedback you might have on some of those when we, when we get there. So work on the project continues really full speed. Design development is where we really get into the weeds on, you know, how does this door function and where do we put cabinets and, you know, those kinds of very detailed type conversations. And as you can imagine, on this project, there's a lot of all of that stuff. So our team's been in all-day meetings generally twice a week. In fact, most of the team is across the hallway talking cameras in the jail. So rousing conversation, but necessary work. At the end of this week, the architect is due to the builder a 50% design development plan, which is really going to serve as a, as a check drawing. If you remember, at the end of schematic, we had a long list of, of value engineering items. And that 50% plan is really due to the builder for them to go through and validate that we've hit all of those reductions that we're planning. So the ones that we could validate already, we've done. And it seems like we're, we're on the right path. I have no reason to, to believe we're going to see any surprises as far as some of our reductions that we take. And the one wild card might be site work, just due to the amount of site, oops, the amount of site that we're consuming. There might be a need to bring in some more infill in that. That could sway that number slightly. Site work is progressing very fast with the architect, trying to work through our connection to the city of St. Cloud. Utilities were about 2,000 feet down the road from the corner of the site. And so that 2,000 feet's been a part of discussion on who's going to install it, own it, pay for it, those kinds of conversations with the city. And then, you know, really, what's the best way to do it? The, if the, if we can't come up with some kind of a, a share of that cost, that could be, that could have some budget impact from what we had estimated. If, if the county's got to pick up most of that cost, that might be a, a significant, probably plus million dollar line item. So more to come on that. The jail captain, Mark Maslinkowski and myself have tours scheduled with two detention cell manufacturers and two detention hardware manufacturers coming up here in March. And really, the goal for that is to drum up as much competition as we can. You know, we're going to pay a lot of money for those things and competition's our friend when it comes to that. So vetting some manufacturers, both for what they can provide us upfront and what kind of service they can provide us after the fact, which is, you know, probably more important when we're putting together a 50 million, or a 50-year project. So landscape and site security's just kicking off. So we brought in a few more folks here from the county out of campus security and facilities to, to help steer that conversation as well. And then really preparing for that April 8th, next decision point for you where we'll take a hard look at design development as it sits now, provide you that more comprehensive check estimate and look for your blessing to get into construction document phase on a significant portion of the project. And that's really leading up to us getting this project out into the bid market in late summer, early fall, which is really a, that's the target we want to hit. That's a great time to be out there for the following years project. It gets us, you know, out in front of a lot of other projects, which is good. So more internally, we've continued to negotiate with the two property owners on our preferred site. Those negotiations are going well. The owners have been very, very, very good to work with. Hopefully sometime in the next board meeting or potentially the one after, we plan to bring something more formal to the board. So that's good news. This past week, we had a meeting with our TEP committee that works out of our environmental services. As we had mentioned before, both of these properties have some wetlands on them. And our plan has really done a good job of avoiding to the degree possible and mitigating those areas where we can't. So our wetland impact for the size of project we're doing is very minimal. But there is some and anticipate that we will be buying some wetland credits to, to offset that. But our plan received positive feedback from that, that committee. That was more of a, a pre-application chance for them to look and ask questions and get familiar with it before it lands on their desk for a more formal application. But feedback was positive. And probably the, one of the most significant activities for me this past week, we really worked internally to try to diversify our team. As this thing starts to get legs, there's a lot of parts and pieces. And even the little projects within this are, are massive projects. So we've added some staff to our project and furniture fixtures is probably the biggest one. And, and Aaron Hughes, our emergency management director has agreed to help me out with that, which is a, that's a huge undertaking just in and of itself. If you think how many tables and chairs and, and refrigerators and microwaves and all of that stuff that goes into this building. So that's a, that's a huge project and a giant weight taken off. Shelley Benson has been kind enough to take on the wayfinding signage project. And you'll recall, almost a year ago, we intentionally pulled that project out of the Justice Center with the intent that whatever wayfinding we do, we'd like it to roll through all of our buildings. So the county, you know, their wayfinding and our, the mobile side of that all works the same way across all our buildings. So that in and of itself is another big project. And then camera, key cards and building automation. Again, getting back to competitive bidding, you know, we have those systems that exist, but it's one of those deals where we don't know what we don't know. So in the spirit of competition, I think it's a good idea to go out and see what's on the market, what other vendors there are out there and make that a more competitive process. Like, we're going to see a significant savings doing that more competitively. So.
I'm glad I brought that up. You know, when it comes to automation and technology, I mean, the way this stuff changes, you know, we put something in on, on paper and, and by the time we open up the door, it's antiquated. And, and we've seen that with so many different payroll things, human services, things like that, you know, I'm certainly, I don't know the best way to approach that, but I want to be mindful that, you know, that what we're putting in might not last as long as it will. And are we buying time or, or what? But just be mindful of how we're going to actually, you know, use the technology, use the automation. Because I, again, I hate to see it be replaced five years after we open a door. So.
Kevin?
Yeah, it, Commissioner Persky, you make a, a good point because, you know, we're going to bid this stuff in spring of 2026 and it's not going to go live until 2029. So I mean, it, at the rate technology changes, you're 100% right. It's a, it's a known problem. I think the, what we're trying to get here is what kind of backbone, what kind of infrastructure can we put in the building that might support, you know, some of that new technology? And it might cost us a little bit more upfront now to put that infrastructure, that backbone, you know, behind the drywall. But like you said, as fast as this stuff changes, the more we can do to make the, the next change easier. And that's really what this whole research or request for information type project is, is tell us what's out there. Tell us where this is headed. Tell us how we can best position a 2026 building for a 2029 install. So, you know, great point.
I can't imagine the depth of that because my phone died last week and it took me half a day to get a new phone. That's one phone. I can't imagine.
Yeah, it's, it's stunning when you start going door to door and you see just the number of card readers in the building. You know, it's just, it's staggering, but.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. And Kevin, I mean, to that end, obviously, we have to go out for bid, but it's not like concrete. So is there an opportunity in all of this that the contracts are buying us some time with some locked-in prices perhaps as we're doing it? Some, some of them are not going to change, but some of it could actually be quite different and certainly don't want to be paying for obsolete technology.
Kevin?
Commissioner Clark, you make another good point that, you know, we're asking the contractors to, you know, see three years into the future on what, you know, what they're going to be able to supply. And there certainly is some risk there that's just inherent on a project that crosses three years. And inevitably, I'll probably be back here in 2028 with something that has changed or developed or is better than what we anticipated. And probably going to happen. And it's kind of an unavoidable risk. But from a pricing standpoint, you know, our contractors are going to have to do a good job to see into the future and, and, you know, put their name on a contract in 2026 for something that they're going to supply some years down the road. And yeah, there's, there's some risk there. It's, you know, like you said, do the best we can to set ourselves up to adapt if we need to is really, really about the best we can do.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it may be that there's a contract modification at some point that's needed, but that, I mean, it is interesting, both just, you know, even thinking about software and what's different now from six months ago or what the workday project is entirely. I mean, there is, there are a number of things, some of which are, you know, they, they are a bit more skeletal at this point. There are things that we know that probably won't change a lot. And then there'll be the, the opportunities of what can be time-saving for the staff who's working there or making it easier for the people who'll be in the spaces. So, thank you.
And the reality, not to labor my phone, but they build them the last 36 months. I mean, the guy told me that point blank and mine lasted 35. So I mean, even that, as Commissioner Persky said, it gets outdated before it might even be in. But that's the reality of everything that we deal with, unfortunately. But certainly, projects like this anticipate that and, you know, have some protections, I would assume. How much furniture are we going to reuse? Any at all?
Commissioner Bertram, I'm not intending to reuse any furniture. Everything we have in the law enforcement center is, I'd say, well past its useful life. There's some furniture in courts that's pretty recent. And when I say recent, within like the last three years that I think might have some viability to be reused. It's in good shape. It's just making sure that what, how it's configured can fit into the next space. So some opportunity there. As far as equipment goes, I don't see a whole lot of our equipment coming forward out of the new building. Most of this stuff, because we knew there was a project coming up, a lot of that's been deferred already. So to the extent it's functional, absolutely we'll bring it forward. But it's not our current plan to bring a whole lot.
And do we sell what we don't bring forward? It's surplus, yeah.
Yeah, surplus, we'll either send it to auction, which on the furniture side hasn't been, hasn't been real productive for us. But we, we take a stab at it. But I wouldn't consider it a revenue stream. Sometimes it's cheaper to scrap iron it, to be honest.
Do we have an extra set of plans that we can put in the back for the public or grab one if we could, just to have it available for folks? And then it is online, I assume, or can be online?
Will be, yep.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, it'll be on our project website.
I'm not sure where we were. Were you done with the presentation or?
Yeah, I'll take any questions you have on that.
The last page, the square footage, I'm not clear on. There's a vast difference unless I'm misunderstanding something. Are you breaking it apart in parts? Is that what it looks like?
Ah, the, the back page was a, a communication to the builder on how much granite the architect is intending to put on these buildings. That's a, you know, square foot to square foot, that's a very high-dollar finish. So that's one that the builder's tracking very close to make sure that what they're planning in the estimate is what the architect is putting on the sheet. So.
So the numbers are reflecting the granite, amount of granite that would be used. And then is there any recognition of the landscaping for the granite? I mean, do you identify the landscaping part of granite?
We, when we get down that road a little further, we'll have an opportunity to look at landscape. That's really an infancy stage right now. More working with, you know, how the sidewalks and how the roads actually go. And then we'll start putting some, some meat on that bone. So you'll probably see more of that come April 8th.
Okay. And as you know, Cold Spring, I met the new CEO. They're very interested in, you know, not making money on having a presence. You know, they, they offered that they would, they would want to be a part of the project at a point where they're not necessarily making money on this, but that they have a presence there because of Stearns County. And I said, we as a board did say we want granite to be part of it. And they understand and we all understand the costs of that. But if they're willing to work with us on some of that, obviously, and we're going to meet about that at some point, that we better identify that. But that's, that is important, I think. Commissioner Persky?
Yes, Commissioner, that's encouraging about the granite. Just a couple of questions, Kevin. You, you mentioned about modifications, perhaps after we had talked earlier. Are we looking at four floors or five floors now?
We are currently designing four floors in the court tower.
Okay. And then as far as, we're still on for 270 beds? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the shooting range is still in there?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions on Kevin's report? I think this is helpful for us and the public to have these ongoing updates. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I, going forward, you know, our, our information is due back from our architect on end of week. So, you know, end of business Friday, which a little tough for the board packets. We might look to adjust that a little bit. So I'm not dropping this stuff on your desk, you know, here at the board meeting. But stay tuned for that. That's been a, that's been the date now for about 18 months. That might be a little tough to start to unwind, but we'll see what we can do.
Is there something like this being done in the state of Minnesota, a project like this? Or what you're looking at for equipment and things like that is pretty much mostly out of state?
Commissioner Bertram, there's several jail projects that have been completed over the last five years. This is probably the most significant one. Anoka County maybe being bigger than this, but they're a little farther behind in the process than we are. But we've toured five or six smaller projects, Rice County, Beltrami, Carlton, Itasca, Shisago, which is maybe a little bit older, and then Wright. And a lot of these manufacturers, it's, it's a national deal. You know, you have one or two or three companies that do this work and that's kind of who you're stuck with. And so if we can drum up even a pair of, of competitive bids, that's going to be, that's going to save the county a ton of money. And that's really what, what our goal is through March here is to help develop some of those preferred vendor lists and maybe get this out in front of a few places so we can, you know, the more bidders on the list, the better chance we have of getting a solid number. So.
Isn't it great to be a facilities director at this point?
Sure is. Yeah.
For your purposes on mine, I wish this would have been done before we got here.
Yeah.
But just the details, when I walked in this morning, the sidewalks and everything were salted. And I thought to myself, again, what you take for granted, somebody had to get up before eight this morning. And how many buildings do we have and do that? These things just don't happen. And I don't take that for granted. And again, you've got a good team, people that can put the carpet in themselves. Ms. Runtland did a good job. I looked. I, he could do work in my house. You know, just those kinds of things that are, again, ongoing with the number of buildings. of buildings we have, the number of maintenance issues we have, and then now to throw this on top of it. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Clark?
I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, if you and Mr. Schrifels, as we kind of come out of this part of it, just give us a quick update on the hearing, uh, because it's related on the update to projects. So then the sales tax.
I was gonna bring it up, but thank you. I was gonna bring it up. Issues by commissioners.
Seems like it fits here really nicely.
Went to the Senate Tax Committee hearing on the bill for the sales tax exemption. Uh, there was 12 bills, um, uh, on the agenda that day. I've heard there's gonna be 50 total, um, I think, for different projects, um, schools, community centers, Omsa County, Rochester, uh, I can't remember them all that were in front of the committee, but, um, certainly was well received. Uh, you know, and since the hearing, several members, uh, have interacted with me and from both extremes, one saying they're not gonna pass, uh, because the amount of revenue, which shocked me. Uh, one of the senators that was on the tax committee, and then the other one saying they won't all pass, but the most legitimate ones potentially will. Because it's not a cost to the state, but obviously it reduces the revenue that it will generate. But clearly, the point that was made, you know, was it would be a tax on a tax. And, uh, Randy, um, made me look good, uh, at the hearing. So, uh, everything went well. And Senator Putman, uh, was a gracious author. And we have talked to, and we will talk to tomorrow, the rest of the delegation to get them on, uh, and I've sent several emails to get them on as authors and co-authors. There was sign, some kind of confusion, obviously. I mean, I, I don't know how they act these days. Everything's changed. But normally, when I carried a bill, I made sure I had the co-authors. And if it was a regional bill like this, I gave that opportunity. But there was some miscommunication, but I think we're over that. And right now, the main chief authors, uh, should be Representative Wogomond and Senator Putman. And then, uh, one, the one senator said that he would not co-author it. And maybe we can talk, uh, about that. Steve, uh, it's in your area. Uh, maybe we can talk about trying to reach him tomorrow and get him to do that. Um, but, uh, again, I think where we are right now, and of course, what's gonna happen is all these bills are laid over and then are put into one overall tax bill. And then it's a free for all. It's gonna be how it's gonna end. And at the end of the session, it won't be the Stearns County sales tax exemption that's gonna make or break the tax bill. It's gonna be politics, you know, so. But obviously, it's a huge benefit to us and to the residents not to have to pay the sales tax.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
One of the things I was down to testify on, uh, only kind of related on, uh, uh, high acuity and priority admissions. And I will tell you, the Human Service Committee in the Senate wanted to talk a lot about the Department of Corrections mandates on jails. So Sheriff Salk, I haven't gotten to follow up with you, but a few of the members also, uh, separately were talking about some of these. And given ours is about mandated services, they seemed bipartisanly to be thinking we were gonna have a better chance of getting those, those kinds of bills getting through. To your point, they're not gonna break the budget, but it also, there's some really nice requests, but they're, they're not the things that we're required to do and our taxpayers are required to pay for. So thank, thank you for that work.
If you have any input, Randy, on it, um?
Um, no, I, I think one thing we have to work on is the revenue note with Department of Revenue. I think they had the wrong numbers there. So that's just something we need to follow up with.
And I'm not sure how you tell the Department of Revenue that they're wrong, but let's do that. I mean, that attack.
Well, you know.
That sounds fun, Mr. Chair.
The Department of Revenue asked for the cost of the project, which is what we gave them and what we, some of the project would be exempt under current state law. And so really, what, what we need to do is remind them that, yeah, we gave you what you, what you asked for, but we, we need to separate what would be already.
Which would be the jail. That's already exempt, which obviously is what percentage of the project. So I see what you're saying. So it's not a $325 million project. It's a 225 million or whatever. Yeah, got it. Commissioner Persky?
For the sake of the public that's listening, what type of dollar amount are we talking about? Ballpark figure as far as the exemption?
Well, I think the sales tax, at least they had around seven million. And I believe about half of that is probably gonna be the jail. So, um, it's about a three and a half million dollar difference.
And that's annually?
That's the total.
Over.
Okay. On the construction, so.
So on the total construction, it would be three, four million dollars?
Then it would be a sales tax on a sales tax.
Correct.
It does not make sense.
Right. And especially for a regional, I mean, clear, again, some of what we heard, Randy, you know, the community center in Rochester and some of these school, you know, certainly a little bit of a stretch.
Right.
This is certainly front and center.
Ice rings.
I would agree. Yeah, so, some of them, I think are all government projects, but right, uh, you know, an athletic field or a performing arts center, a little different than the jail, right? So.
And Senator Putman, uh, made it clear that he was never in jail, but he did tour the jail. He wanted to make that distinction. So just for the record.
Distinction to make.
Yep. And he did clarify, he said, yet. So, uh, but he was a gracious author. So.
Still time, I suppose, but.
Anybody, anybody else? Uh, if not, oh, how do you want to, um, yeah, how do you wanna do the design like right now? Or how do you wanna?
Yeah, um, Commissioner Bertram, what I, what I gave you guys in front, and I'll, I'll leave one back here, pull it up on the screen here. So I might need some help from the back room. There we go. So as the, uh, I'll start this conversation with, these are works and, you know, this is work in progress. So this is our architect's, uh, kind of first swing. If you'll remember, we took a whole floor off the, the court tower. We added some second floor and moved and shifted and pushed. So the building is shaped a little different. So they went back to the drawing board on outside elevations and provided us, uh, three ideas that they had, um, uh, for an exterior. And I'm really just looking for any sort of feedback or parts you like or parts you don't, um, here when we get through them. But, uh, option one, as you're looking through your packet, stays pretty much in line with what we had shown you before. Um, keep some shadowing on the courts tower, maybe does a little better job on some glazing, um, up front. But, uh, pretty minimal when it comes to canopy space and, and those kinds of things. And so it'll be a combination of precast, um, concrete metal panels and, and obviously granite on this front facade. So, um, option two is very similar to option one, except it changes a little bit of the massing, uh, around the front entrance. It bulks up the size of the columns, um, changes some, uh, window configurations to more mirror the courthouse, um, on the front lobby, but otherwise fairly similar in design. And then the third option takes our direction. We provided them some time ago of really wanting to have that, uh, gathering space or that public plaza feel, um, that, you know, some of our courthouse provides out front. And so they really leaned into, uh, what can we do for that plaza space or make that area? Oh, I'm sorry, I forget I'm driving here. So I'll roll through these a little slower then. So option one. And then option two. Again, these two.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Kevin a question?
Commissioner Notch?
On all these options, is there like a rain gutter over the entryway or how, you know, when people walk in, if it's raining?
Everything drains internally. So everything's all piped internally and then out underground, uh, with the exception of a couple overflows, but.
Commissioner Notch got dripped on once. I can tell.
Well, you know, because sometimes you walk in and it's, you know, if the rain, it's dripping straight down. But if it's.
Getting back to Commissioner Bertram's ice and salt comment, I can assure you, I'm not gonna have roasting outside.
Can have a heated concrete underneath right by the door there?
Planning to have a significant amount of ice melt. Um, that's the gift that keeps on given there from maintenance and liability.
Like an in-floor heat. That'd be nice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, Kevin, are.
Commissioner Persky?
All these, you know, we're talking about the use of the granite. Can you go back to the previous picture?
Oh, yep.
Yeah. Now, you know, just looking at that, uh, where would we actually be seeing the granite? Because my question would be, would we even wanna, like on the entry coming in there, even keep it at the first floor level? And then the other would be perhaps, or, or would be concrete face?
Sure.
Or, or, you see, see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Is that because of people walking by, you see the attractive granite? But of course, anything above, you wouldn't be necessarily looking up. I mean, is that an op, op, option?
So what you're seeing here, and I'll do my best to, to pull in and, uh, if you see these lighter gray shaded areas, um, sort of right above the gal in the, in the white coat there?
The vertical pillars?
The vertical pillars. That's what they're anticipating to be granite.
Okay.
So trying to do a lot of visual with a little product. And then as you get more into the entrance, uh, right where people are walking, uh, then you start to see some columns that have granite. You start to see some granite on the outside of the building that carries into that main lobby. But really trying to keep it, keep it where the people are.
Correct.
As best we can. Because, uh, it's a high-impact finish, but it's got a high-impact cost to it too. So trying to be, trying to be mindful of where we put it and, and, uh, really make it a feature. So, and that carries through on all of these in, in, uh, different ways. But that, that theme of trying to keep, you know, keep it where people are is, has really been the, the direction. And then the last option three, like I said, gets really into that, uh, this is the last of option two. And then option three really leans into that, uh, gathering space or that, you know, that plaza, uh, appeal, similar to what the front steps of the courthouse provides us downtown. So, um, through landscaping, it would be more of a, a gathering space with, with some seating and some of those kinds of things. Um, and really makes the, you know, put some emphasis on that front door. There's no question where you're headed when you pull up to the site. But I will tell you, uh, based on our current estimate, this elevation would come at a bit of a premium. This would be a step up of where we're probably idling right now on budget. So keep that in mind. But what that impact is, I, I don't know at this point. It's, this is work in progress. So it's more to get a feel of where, where we want to be and what kinds of things we like. So.
Well, I can tell you, going backwards, uh, it's not gonna surprise you, uh, number three, we don't see a lot of that in District Three at all. So, I mean, that kind of a look, uh, with no practicality to me, yep, certainly looks nice. But I think we're really gonna need to zero in pretty quickly. When the bids come in, we're gonna find out. But, uh, practical, uh, usage, you know, looks great, but, you know, um, I, you know, again, you're looking for some direction. Me personally, sure, it looks great, but the minute I read it costs more. And for that look, uh, again, I don't know what that dollar amount is, but let's really make it, we're gonna be focusing on longevity of the building, on the practicality of the floor space, those kinds of things. And the look of a public building on one and two certainly isn't bad. I mean, but this is a definitely a different look. But again, if you're talking, you know, 500,000, well, then I guess we could look at it. If you're talking millions, uh, that probably would determine it for me. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all of these. And these are good examples of perhaps, and I know we're gonna get to the engagement sessions, people getting a chance to take a look of it. Um, for me, uh, again, my own personal opinion, to use your words, Mr. Chair, is depending upon what that cost would be and what kind of a deal we can cut on the granite, among other things, um, with, with others over the long run, that what we expect people to be doing or using outside courthouses and certainly what we have here now, that could actually end up being a good space for both the people who are having to sit for hours waiting, uh, for folks when the weather's nice, but also, you know, if we're celebrating Memorial Day or we're trying to do some other kind of acknowledgement, it gives that. Um, otherwise, we're probably gonna see people continuing either to do it at the historic courthouse, um, whatever the use for that is and or just being out there. So I'd be really interested in, you know, what the costs might be because, uh, I certainly agree with you, Jeff. I mean, I wouldn't want to be paying a lot of more money, but it would be interesting to see what that looks like and what feedback is from people.
And to, to piggyback on your comments there, Commissioner Clark, it, the direction really was, you know, the, the courthouse being that public gathering space or that place to go, you know, air your grievances. Uh, if we don't consciously provide a place for that activity to happen and, and facilitates may be a strong word, but if you don't give that, uh, stuff in a place to happen, it's gonna happen where you don't want it to be. And so we're trying to be very conscious about understanding that, I mean, there's gonna, there's gonna come a day and, and let's accommodate that and, and allow that, uh, public forum to exist, but still allow the building to function and be secure. And so that's, that's what you're seeing in a lot of these is that plaza idea starting to develop.
Mr. Chair? As a, as a follow-up, I, so I do appreciate your asking, you know, that being part of the direction that you've asked them to look at. I'm hoping that part of the, the question to them is how to do this in a way that can last, but also is not gonna, I know, use the word premium, but not cost a premium, right? You want something that can look decent if we're able to do so without it costing what, you know, the difference between what taking a floor off the courts would be, because that's not what we were going for, right? So I don't know if they're coming up with additional ways or what the products would be, because that, that's something to consider. But I do appreciate that.
Okay. And a lot of this will be, uh, what, once we again get the preliminary bids, we'll have kind of a more of a reality check. And then that's when we're really gonna have to zero in on A, B.
Yeah.
It's gonna be like going to the eye doctor.
Yeah, our.
This one better or this one better?
The architects are, you know, they're getting to the point now where they're starting to look for some, uh, some direction on, on how we wanna go. And, and this is good conversation. It helps me, um, sort of wrap, you know, get your feedback and the feedback from, uh, from our internal team. And it, it really does help me kind of guide where, where I think they should land when we get to that April 8th. So we're, we're not, uh, not too far one direction or the other. So I appreciate the feedback.
And don't be afraid to say this is what we think, your team. I mean, again, that doesn't mean we may agree. But if the team has a thought for a reason for something, share that. And of course, uh, we'll, we'll all take that into effect as well. This is a moving process from both us and the staff. Ultimately, we'll have to approve it. But, uh, keep, if we're missing something or not understanding something, we need to know that, you know, so.
My.
Kevin?
Initial plan would be to, to bring this forward and maybe some of the interior bigger questions, maybe in the same format that we did, uh, when we looked at, um, um, design themes back, well, geez, I don't even know how long ago it was, but red dot, green dot day. Um, and that, you know, bring our advisory committee in or bring some of those people that are, that are knowledgeable about this. And I think if I'm able to provide them a little bit of feedback on what we like, and they can develop these a little further, that'll give our builder a chance to put some, you know, maybe put a price tag to what some of these things are and, and have an idea on, you know, if we do this much granite or that much, or, you know, what, you know, help kind of mold that. But, um, to keep the project on pace, that's a conversation or an activity we might have to do sooner than later. But I mean, Dr. Williams and I can work to see if, if something like that can happen.
And I'm sure that you're gonna continue, obviously, practicality, usage, maintenance, you know, those are, in my mind, those are all the main issues. Aesthetics are certainly fine. But again, once we know what those dollar differentials are, but, you know, the biggest thing is, again, let's build something that we're not gonna have to maintain for 50 years or have issues. And, you know, tho, those are the main goals. And then, in my mind, and then the second, Commissioner Notch?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I like the design number two, taking some of the windows off of that south wall. What about, instead of doing the all-out number three, what if there was a bump out on each side of the flags, you know, up to the flags, you know, versus the big bump out? You know, because then you could still have your seating would be undercover if, you know, it's a hot day or, you know, just, that would be an option. It'd be interesting to see because the flags would kind of be in a U, you know, just a thought. So you'd, you'd run up to that first window, you know, with the entry.
Sure.
And then you'd come over to the flags, bump back to the building, come around the flags, bump. bump back out a little bit and bump to the corner.
Certainly something we can, I know our design team is listening, so I'm sure.
Just a thought.
I'm sure their pens are burning.
You know, instead of the all-out, because I'm sure that's going to be expensive. Plus you're looking at maintenance in the longer run on that option three.
And there's no shade or anything, obviously, provided.
Not when it's that high.
Yeah. But again, you, I think you got the point. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, just maybe kind of along those lines. Perhaps if it ends up being cost prohibitive, another place to consider it be in the landscaping. Can there be something that shows this is where you come if you, you know, nearby? You know, whether that's, we've got some parks in St. Cloud that have got things that look gazebo. I hate to say gazebo-like, but something that either St. Cloud State does with pillars or something that would be less cost that could say, here's where you go. But I think, you know, we all know that this is going to be a place that people are going to likely come. So, so there could be some other options to, we've helped them, we find that too.
Yeah, to, to address two points you made, that's a, definitely been a theme we've been hammering home is I don't, to the degree possible, I don't want people to guess where they're going. Because if they have to try and decide where they're going, they're going to be where we don't want them. So the pathways and really making it, as you can see here, even to a smaller degree, the sidewalks sort of, there's really nowhere to go off of them. It, it takes you to the front door whether you like it or not. But I agree, that's landscaping, I think, will have a huge part of, you know, what we're not seeing is trees and planters and some of those features and seating. And that's all part of the development. And then getting back to the durability question, I agree that durability for me or longevity is, I'm a function over form person myself. So the, the vast majority of this building is designed as precast concrete, which changed the, the joint caulking out about every 10 years and that's about as durable as it gets. You know, the landscaping, the, the windows, the metal panels, all of that stuff was picked because it's a, it's a finish that's going to be here for a long, long time. We wouldn't accept anything to the contrary.
Good. Well, keep us posted and again, constant information is better than piling on at one point. So appreciate that. Mike, then with the engagement discussion?
Yeah, and given that the board's more informal discussions that we've had, you can see the schedule that I put, that Kevin provided and we put in the, in the packet. There's, if you look ahead to the next 12 months, we, we're planning, the team is planning on having for sure, six work sessions with the, with the board. And we know there'll probably be more. We'll have reports, probably have some, a couple of meetings that will, will need to deal with the land purchase. So this is going to be in front of you routinely now for the next 12 months. And as I looked at the schedule, I thought, eh, maybe you'd want to have those, if you do do some engagement sessions in the latter part of March before that April work session, or you're going to have a little, we're going to have another cost estimate on, on April 8th. Isn't that right, Kevin? So maybe you might even want to wait until into April. But I don't think, if I look at the schedule, that you'd want to be doing them any later than that.
And I agree. And personally, I think if, again, what we have to decide is do we want to do them countywide kind of initiative? I would suggest two of them, one on either side of the county. Or do we do them individually? Again, I'm open to either way. So the rest of the board will have to weigh in.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark?
I'm wondering, you know, two sounds great, but obviously if it's, maybe if it's three, so if one in the middle, that's the only thing I would say. But I think, I mean, it'd be very easy for us to do something at the library on the East End, St. Cloud Library. I don't have strong feelings about it. The, the truth is, we could have on our website a way for people to give any other, you know, input or ideas that, you know, staff help us come up with.
Commissioner Persky?
I don't know, would we want to have one in each of our districts?
No.
Five's a lot, I think.
That's a lot.
I think two, three, I think should and would do it. And again, I don't know if there's going to be 100 people there. There's going to be two people there, just like our outreach meetings. But we will at least make it available. And as we know, the spin of those meetings, even if people aren't there, it brings attention to newspaper, website, and then people start paying more attention, even if they're not actually there. But I do believe, I feel strongly that it's important to hear them, so.
And Mr. Chair, we definitely, we definitely had people who came, even in St. Cloud, came from the middle to the farther side of the county. So I, you know, even what I just said might not have been fully well thought out in terms of, you know, do you need more than two? But people, people came, some of the same people came to multiple places. But it was, it was good to give people a couple of choices at least.
Kevin?
When talking about when to do these, it's, the way I'm looking at it is that if, if you, the commissioners, are really looking to receive any sort of feedback on elevations or the, or the drawings or the plan and, and want to be able to react to some of that feedback, then probably that week of March 24th or pre-April 8th would be my recommendation. Because I think that April 8th dates, you know, we're really going to move into construction documents and that's, that's go time for, for that stuff. So I'd hate to, I'd hate to do something later and then try to back up and change some of that. If your intentions are more to inform and show what we're doing, then I think after April 8th is probably a good idea, because we're going to have pretty concrete design development plans forming. We're going to have a budget that's updated and more current to what the set of drawings are. But your, your ability to push feedback back into the project starts to shrink down.
But would there be a possibility of feedback tweaking after that? But to me, that would be paramount in my mind is that we, if we did hear something really great, we'd want to recognize that. So we wouldn't want to, in my opinion, we wouldn't want to pass that opportunity. So after April 8th, the more we know, the better, I think, to share with the public and then to have input potentially, and then to act on that input. That's that, that fine line and I'm not sure. And then of course, if we have more than one, we'll have to time them accordingly.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky?
As kind of Kevin started out, I, I would like to actually maybe see one before the April 8th meeting. And maybe we hold it at the library and, and, and just see where the public, maybe there's not that much interest by the public. Maybe there's a strong interest.
And maybe that's a way to do it is if we do it one earlier and then kind of get that input and then do one a little later after we know more. So we'd have, or then three, if we had multiple meetings at different times, we'd have additional information between one meeting and another meeting. Maybe that's a way to do it as well.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to, you know, we certainly can make changes, you know, after that April 8th, but the farther developed that the drawings get, you know, the harder it is to go back and change it. Not, not, you know, not impossible till it's, you know, bricks and mortar in the ground. But just the, the level of development, the amount of work that it takes to unwind and redo just grows. And then anytime that happens, it takes time and that's time, potentially money. And, and so that's, you know, if, if input's a, a big deal, then I would suggest doing one prior to April 8th. If good information and a, and a solid look at the budget is important, then I would go the other side of April 8th.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Kornack, I mean, I think having an engagement session before April 8th is important. The, the timing, us keeping on a schedule, us keeping the costs down. I mean, time is money. So just that engagement and as was indicated, maybe that we will or won't have, you know, many people here. We had a lot of people come to one. Actually, it was the session the League of Women Voters held. But, you know, others were people coming in and out and they were interested and they got their questions answered and that was certainly helpful along the way. So we may or may not need more, but having something before then, because we don't want to unintentionally be delaying this project, going back to the cost issue.
We, and so the different timing, I think you're, what I'm hearing is two to three meetings, two to three different time periods. You know, personally, I'd like to have one in Cold Spring. Commissioner Notch wants something out in Albany, Freeport, whatever. And then if we do one at the library, we're kind of hitting the regions. So I'm hearing kind of a consensus that that's what we're open to. And then we're not going to, you know, I think we have to make it clear that we're not going to rehash all this. We're not going to rehash whether or not we should be doing this and all that stuff. It's now, okay, we're going to do this. No, it's more like, okay, here it is. What are your thoughts? What are your, you know, and we don't know the details yet and we won't. And again, that's going to ultimately fall on the five of us to make the detailed final decisions. So it's, it's fluid and it's just big picture stuff and it's educating. For me, it would be 50% educating the public on where we're at right now. And then the other part would be to get some input if it's legitimate or if it's, you know, real.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark?
For me, I suppose in some ways along those lines, there's the educating and then maybe it's just the reinforcement about what we're trying to do. It's like what we're doing in our meetings, trying to give people another opportunity to see and understand. And if there's, there's something else in there, the more people know and understand, the better. And I, you already know this, Mr. Chair, I hate to say, well, we're done with this part. I'm going to have to go, I have to go pick up my mother from a medical.
So if we, I think it's a consensus that you're, are you getting what you need, Mike?
I think so.
Two to three meetings?
Yeah, and time them out.
Two to three different times.
Try to schedule one before that April. We've got last week in March, even the first week in April, and then do one later as, as the design progresses. And we'll go from there.
I can work with you on doing, if we do the one in Cold Spring, City Hall would be a logical place to do it. I'll work, once we have a date, you know, to do that. And then Commissioner Notch wants to do something and if you want to do it in the library, I guess, I don't know how that.
And Mr. Chair, the good thing is the, our staff are really good at setting that up. Miss Midas and the team set up a lot of those before. So if we're letting them know where we're hoping for, I'm guessing they're going to get that covered.
And part of Kraus Anderson's work due to us is, you know, that marketing piece that we did for the sales tax, that piece continues. So we, we have that team with, with Kay that can provide us with any sort of marketing materials or poster boards or anything like that. And so we'll certainly engage them to help us, you know, build, build that presentation.
And before we pick dates, obviously make sure that all five of us can make those dates.
And Mr. Chair, that we, that last week in March, there's something that I think at least a couple of us will probably be at. So front loading Monday or Tuesday would probably be helpful.
Okay, so you got what you needed?
I'm looking at April 1st right now.
Oh, yeah, that's probably fine. Oh, April Fool's Day, Mr. Chair, that ought to be fun.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin and Mike and everybody for the, for the update. With that, we're going to go to issues by commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you have anything to share?
The irony, the opening of the meeting where we make, we make, we attach some importance to people pre-registering for the open session. And then we ignore it and only to have the, the added commentary about how we don't follow procedure. They wouldn't be commenting if we had followed procedure. But it's a small item. I think you guys are doing a fine job. Big building projects are, are not a tinker toy type of process. So this is going well in the grand scope of things.
Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I really only have one, well, two things. I'll be going to the Environment, Natural Resources Policy Meeting at the alleged conference. That starts, well, tonight, you're going to attend MRC my behalf.
I'll do my best.
Well, it should be pretty good. It's in person. The only other comment I have is I do kind of take exception to Commissioner Persky's comment at the last meeting about judging or questioning my integrity, which I, I felt was very inappropriate, especially coming from somebody here on the dais.
And I, well, I won't, I'll keep my comments until I have my comments, I guess. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner, Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, first of all, we had somebody questioning about our efforts as far as lobbying is concerned and definition of a lobbyist. I just want to just clarify that, you know, to define to lobby means to promote or secure passage of legislation by influencing public officials. You know, and I think we all do that. That's, that's part of our job, whether we go out to DC for various things. We have a list of priorities. We invite the legislators to come in and hear where, where we're going with them. We've got the area planning organization. We lobby for transportation, Air Transportation Alliance. You were just down at the legislature lobbying for our efforts to reduce the sales tax burden that we have. So anyway, I'm just confused. We had some people concerned about our lobbying efforts. Of course, we're not professional lobbyists, meaning we, we get paid specifically for lobbying for, for projects, but it is part of our duty to, you know, proceed with the, the goals and objectives of the, of the county and, and to work for those efforts. And then also I, I remain troubled about the, the process we had on that whole CUP. You know, again, we had the testimony this morning and we had a proposal for a flower shop and it turned out to be a concert venue. I guess that maybe we need to take a look at our ordinance, especially looking at what Township St. Joe and St. Wendell and Avon Township are all concerned about, about that issue. Maybe just even looking at the value of peace and quiet in the rural community and do we prize that? And, you know, what protective measures do we have as far as preserving that, those people that live out there in the community? So I think we've got a ways to go as, as far as where, where we are with this and maybe look at redoing some of the ordinances as we did with, with Shouses and with, with other things as vacation home rentals, because I think we got some strong concerns of the people out in the community.
Thank you. Couple of things, the Senate tax was already came up. I think I said it and if I didn't, I'm sorry. Jill also joined us and hadn't it been for her, it certainly made the three of us look a lot better having Jill being part of the, she didn't say anything, but she didn't have to. Her presence was enough, so, but that worked out real well. Yesterday, I testified Senate Transportation Committee on a bill that Senator Howe is carrying. I did that Zoom, which was the first time I zoomed in on a committee hearing. It worked out a lot better than driving down and back from St. Paul. The public hearing we have passed in the consent agenda to ordinance 439 F3. When you talk about ordinances, we're obviously, and, and Mike and I and Randy and Jill have talked, we're going to, I think we're going to get together as a family and we're going to have some direction. And before everybody freaks out, I think we're all adults and we all know they have to be posted meetings. So yes, they will be posted, but I think for us to come together, we have strong difference of opinions on different things. And I think Commissioner Notch's point, well taken. Commissioner Persky's point is well taken. We have to learn how to get along and respect, you know, the, the organization. I always was a firm believer, my dad was my dad and I was his son and my sons were my sons and not, you know, and my, and my brother was my brother and his son was his son. Whenever they started getting involved in issues that were between dad and I and my brother, I never had to do that to my sons, but more than once I had to do it to my brother's son, say, this isn't your place. So we all need to know our places and we have to respect each other in those places. And that's something that Mike's going to be working on with us. But on those ordinances and even the department directors, you know, there's, again, there's some things, people are surprised at some actions that have been taken. When you literally haven't talked to somebody for two years, nobody's talked to you about issues that have been come up and everything, it's kind of hard to have a dialogue. And, and so as I said, in the media with Commissioner Persky walking out, unfortunate situations sometimes create unfortunate reactions. So the best thing to do is talk. We need to talk to each other and no department and no elected official is more important or less important than the other one. But again, it's an age-old premise that we need to work together. We're serving the same people and so we have to come to that point. Some people are so busy competing that they don't allow any time for collaborating. And, you know, I'd rather not compete, I'd rather collaborate. But I'll never apologize for sticking up for local governments or for the people. And I don't care if somebody wants. And I don't care if somebody wants to call, again, someone else in an elected position wants to call that bullying or something else, I don't care. I'm, I'm gonna stick up for the people. So again, we all have different approaches to that, but that ordinance, now, for example, prime example, I'm gonna ask, and I've already laid them out, and I'm gonna ask those questions on that ordinance, how many ordinances do we have? And if Shelley's listening, certainly her department can answer these questions. I will do this in an email, but how many ordinances does Benton, Kanawha, Sherburne, Wright County have? How many ordinances change, how many ordinance changes does Environmental Services request annually? How have we ever eliminated an ordinance? Who thought of this ordinance change that needs to be made? How is the ordinance change gonna benefit the average resident? How's the ordinance change gonna benefit Environmental Services now? I mean, every time something, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but four, five times a week, I'm getting hit with environmental services issues. And then now recently, legal action. And it's like, my God, I didn't realize that we were at that level. And Shelley and I did talk before the last meeting, how we can change that, and she said she's open to doing that. But one thing we found out this morning was that obviously if you say something, people remember it and re-quote it. So I was impressed that somebody's listening and they re-quoted five things that I said, but one of the things I have said and will continue to say, if you keep doing what you're doing, you're gonna keep getting what you're getting. And so again, on either extreme, that's how do we do that better? And so we have to find that out. Anyway, but, so that is, and what happens is we know how this goes. These ordinance changes come up, not one person's gonna come before us because it doesn't affect them. It only affects them five months from now when you're told you can't do certain things. But on a regular basis, I'm told by people, I work in four or five counties, we don't have this issue in four or five counties, you know. So again, what can we do to kind of, that's my goal. It's not taking on people or anything else, but some people aren't listening. And so we all gotta listen and we have to try to do some change to make it more appeasable to the public, in my opinion. So that's all I got. Anything else, Mike?
No, you covered the sales tax. Just one other thing before we meet with legislators is, a couple of meetings ago, you added that ABVO item to your legislative priorities. That is getting some traction. And so our, our legislative delegation has been contacted by ABVO. There's a bill that's been drafted. I have an email ready to go out to our, to our legislators and I'll copy you on that and that'll bring, bring you up to date on it. But it's getting some traction and, and as you know, we're doing, we're supporting that bill with Benton and Sherburne Counties as well. So they'll be, they'll probably have that on their mind as well.
Okay. Anything else? If not, for the good of the order, meetings adjourned.